The order, the Tuesday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, uh, Cohasset Select Board. We want to, uh, roll call, starting with Diane.
Diane Kennedy here. Jeanne Haley here.
Well, we're ready here. Brad was here.
Jack Crayton here. Um, all those who customarily start this with a pledge to the flag, all those who care to join me.
My pledge is to the state of the border and to the government, to the citizens, my dedication on your God, you know, so.
This meeting is, um, carried on Zoom. But the board is here, so we will, all votes will be made by just regular, the regular order. Uh, people who are watching on Zoom, if you wish to participate, you can raise your hand using the signal on your, on your computer. You will be recognized. Please identify yourself with your, your name and your address. If you're watching on one, four, three, you can't participate technologically, we can't do that. We are starting this, um, we're going to go to executive session. Um, to consider the, for exemption number six, to consider, consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. The chair so declares. The board will discuss a potential property acquisition. Those of you who are watching at home, we are going to disappear from your screen, go into executive session. Um, we should be back in session. At seven thirty, and at that point, if you'll see us magically reappear. Chair would entertain a motion to go to executive session for, um, reason exemption number six. We have a motion made in second, now go into executive session for exemption number six. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, extension, motion carries unanimously. No, I have an agenda, um, but what I don't have is the packet. Okay. Okay. Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the Cohasset Select Board meeting for Tuesday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Um, we convened at six thirty and went into executive session. We have come out of executive session and we are now entering, uh, regular session. And it's a bit of a formality, but I'm going to call roll again.
Diane Kennedy here. Jeanne Haley here.
Jack Crayton here. Okay, um, it's customary to, for us to give the townspeople the opportunity to speak to the town and to the select board. Rules are, you can speak on anything, keep it brief, but whatever you bring up will not be discussed tonight. It may or may not be on the agenda in the future. Is there anybody who has a public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom?
No, it's the chair.
Okay, all right, moving forward. License and permits, Cohasset High School pre-prom Thursday. I believe we have some people representing the prom. If you'd stand and identify yourself. Tell us what you'd like, yes. Every, just don't be nervous, everybody is listening.
Public speaker, I'm good. Um, so we have filled out a permit to the, and submitted to Chief Quigley, uh, for the prom, something we do every year, you guys have seen it, red carpet, whatnot. Um, so we were just here to, you know, ask if that's something that you would accept. Our perm, I mean, our request for the application and for the permit. And if you would consider, um, waiving the fee as it's a fully donated, um, process and how we raise money for funds for pre-prom.
Okay, uh, for the record, Chief Quigley is not here, he's, he is ill, however, he has looked over all of that and rendered his approval. Um, is there discussion on this matter?
Second.
You have a motion to approve and waive it. B, it's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, both, extension. Boy, that was. I have never seen such a good presentation.
Thank you so much. Good luck with everything.
Just as part of this, we'll close town hall early tonight because they ended up taking, they need to go to this space and then probably who goes in town hall at, uh, three that afternoon. So we'll let people in the past, but we close all.
Um, moving forward, we're going to discuss the, um, building permit fee schedule review and vote. Is, um, Mr. How?
Hey, John How. So did you, uh, want me to?
I think, I think has everybody had a chance to read that in its packet? Does anybody have any discussions?
I would, I would just ask you to summarize it just for the public.
We do, um, uh, one, the plumbing and gas permit fees, uh, had been raised since, uh, two thousand and twelve. Uh, so we reviewed those, I spoke with, uh, plumbing inspectors and building inspectors and situant, more well, Hingham and our own, uh, plumbing inspector here, and they, they all agreed that the fees were inaccurate, at the same least. And they were all, uh, kind of figured when it was going to come. So, uh, we kind of reviewed it with them, came up with a budget, uh, electrical. I think it was two thousand and fifteen, the last time they were raised. So we adjust the, same thing, I spoke with our level inspectors, reached out to Hingham and situants, spoke with their electrical inspectors as well, kind of reviewed the piece and kind of stayed in line with what they were doing. Hingham, I, at last night's town meeting, just passed their fees, uh, for purely on electrical. Uh, ours were probably pretty close to theirs, uh, some a little higher, some a little lower, so we, we seem to be in the middle. Uh, the building fees, I think we just raised the minimum fee from thirty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars. The percentage, we kept the same at one percent, the residential at one point five for, uh, building. That seems, uh, covered as the, as a possible goes up, so we can monitor that, you know, going forward, but I think you know, where we're at now is with the new fees will be pretty much in the middle of pack with everyone else.
Yeah, so as our building inspector representing the town, our fees are in line with comparable terms.
Yes, I think the new fees are.
Other, uh, questions or comments?
Corey, so the, the, just to be clear, the only recommendation, um, for change of the minimum building fee from thirty-five to seventy-five, and a permanent placement, wanted to see a change right on the building, uh, building part side of it.
Is there any, uh, comments from the audience? Anybody from Zoom?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no other discussion, Chair would, uh, uh, entertain a motion.
I know that we, uh, adjust the building, um, plumbing and electrical fees as presented.
Second.
Had a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, new building fee schedule as presented. So any, uh, made in seconded, is there any further discussion? Here, okay.
I would just note that whenever we get the financials, I am pleased to see that our building construction fees have been increasing since the beginning of your tenure, so I thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No, I, I just write, so one of the things that John implemented when we first got here was a post-construction pre-s certificate. True, effectively say, it's an affirmation, it's an affidavit, uh, so it was catching. People may have a little underestimated that they came up or what, thing and that, it took a whole lot more work. So it's been chewing up the fee.
Certainly an innocent mistake.
Innocence, and at a large, innocently correct, when you get there. So John has done a very effective job and.
Try to keep them honest.
Yeah, very good, thank you. You know, when they know they're going to be held to be honest, frequently they are. Amazing how that works. All right, we've had a motion made in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, extension, motion carries unanimously. Thank you and thank you for the good job.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, for the, um, we're going to discuss various matters having to do with the annual town meeting. Um, we also have a, the town hall building committee is here. Are they? Oh, they're in the hall. Wonder.
Or a little, you're a little.
No.
That's all right. That's good. They're coming.
It is better to wait until we're at the right time. Okay. Yes, you, yes, you are, we're waiting to be seven thirty-five, which we are now there, we don't want to start early. Okay, the, um, this is Phil Lair, chairman of the, um, Town Hall Building Committee and his committee. You know, th- this committee's worked very hard, as those members, if you could stand and introduce yourselves, that would be very, we'd like to thank you. Let me just stand and we say thank you.
Wait, side chat. I've got Mark on here too.
Uh, Mark's on Zoom.
Okay.
Mark Cameron, Mark Cameron. Okay. Bill.
Bill Lair, Chair, Town Hall Building Committee. Thank you for having us, uh, tonight, we're just pretty much, um, showing you what we had before with updated numbers. Um, these are real numbers as of, as of, uh, this week, so, um, the first slide we have here just shows our committee. Um, less one member, Sam Wakeham, who passed away last year. Uh, the next slide. This is the charge that we've talked about so much, what we were asked specifically to do. Um, make the new town hall function, stay flexible and accessible. Um, town hall should remain at forty-one Highland Avenue. Um, value to the old structure, historic structure of eighteen fifty-seven should be, uh, respected and renovated. Um, and then there are a couple of other items here that, uh, were suggested at the time, try to get, uh, private uh, funded to help us with this sort of structure, which has been somewhat unsuccessful. And the budget, budget item on the bottom was put on there, I think some five years ago now, that, uh, we try to keep it within a ten-year capital plan, uh, payment, which is unrealistic. Um, so here are the, here are the real numbers. These have just come in, uh, the actual construction cost is twenty-one million six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, uh, contingency, which is something you carry in case of, just over a million dollars. Soft costs, that's everything in behind all this, like moving the, the employees out of the building to a temporary location. That's eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, or a project manager, which is a requirement, state of Massachusetts, to make sure that we get a quality bill. Um, is eight hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and then design, which is your plans, uh, they're at nine eighty, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And then soft con contingency, which is all the built-ins beyond, um, designer owner and the soft cost and the four hundred five dollars, the total of that, uh, build is twenty-five million, eight hundred and three thousand and change. Next slide. So we have appropriations, money in hand has been allocated to this committee, so we go ahead with the plans. Our appropriations are, at this point, are, um, at one point five million dollars, uh, that was on from the town hall, town meeting floor to, uh, to do the study, to do the plans and get to this point. Um, at, at the moment, we have a PBC grant of one million dollars, so that brings the total down to twenty-three million, three hundred and two thousand dollars. So we looked at, we didn't do a study, there are no plans, but we wanted to have something to, um, compare the new the building as we are charged to, uh, tonal renovation, that would be renovating the the new, the old annex and renovating Old Town Hall. Um, and we're looking at that cost to be between twenty-one and twenty-two million. Now, that's not a whole lot different than cost new as a plan that we have proposed to this point. Some of the, um, good things that come out of having, uh, renovations is you get new systems, new roof, restored auditorium, the accessibility, which is a mission right now. Updated bathrooms and fixtures. Um, which is a huge deal, the plans show bathrooms at the front foyer of this, uh, Old Town Hall, which will be separate from the rest of the town hall, so that any function on the common will have access to those bathrooms, so we don't have to have porta-potties out on the out on the parking lot, taking out parking spaces and, and not looking at that either, on town hall glass. Appropriate office and meeting room spaces, meeting room spaces, we know, is a real issue, if you've tried to have a small meeting in, uh, the current annex, it's a, it's a real challenge. One of the meeting rooms is right in the middle of a hallway. Contracted promised space for one-four-three TV and safe harbor, those two are included in the, in the structure as they should be. Um, flexibility to change layout, how many future needs, uh, that's a, a real key issue with us. So there are only, I think, two columns and the, the, uh, elevator that actually support the floors. So at any one time down the road, whether it's ten years, twenty years, thirty years, or forty years, all of the petitions within the first and second floor can be removed and we can set up new office space anyway, that might, the demand might be in the future. Um, and improved layout and wayfinding, so when you come in the main entrance from the side of the parking lot, which so you don't have to walk around the building, you get in or try to get in the back door, when you come in the front entrance, you look straight ahead, you'd be looking straight ahead of the doors that enter the side of, of Old Town Hall. Um, so it's, it's very easy to walk down a corridor, see the public facing offices where, where people will be they're going to find working their taxes or whatever. Those are right there, and then the second floor is, is the other services that public don't necessarily need to go to. But it's a real simple, straightforward layout, not like today, trying to find who's on the second floor and who's on the first floor. Catering kitchen, uh, in, in the front vestibule of Old Town Hall, you're expanding that little, uh, concession area a little bit, we'll put a sink in there and some, um, heavier, uh, electricity, so if we want to put another or something like that. And that side door will remain up there, so it'll be easy access from the outside, so it's only to park a food truck out front there and come right in the side door, also have a door that'll come in straight to the back of the vestibule that would come in here, that would, the food services could come right into this, this hall, so. Um, we set that up, uh, for functions, and we can think about income from rental in, in the property as well, if we, if we wanted to down the line. It would be set up in such a way that a catering service could come in, set up out front, and somebody could use this. You know, what a great place for a reception, for a wedding, you've got three churches right here, it's a great place for a reception. Next slide. So, uh, last night, Town Hall Building Committee voted unanimously to move forward with this project. And that, uh, includes restored auditorium for civic and artistic use, public restroom for events on the common, more attractive exterior, keeping with historic common. We're talking about the annex that does not look proper right now. Uh, the catering kitchen, which I've mentioned, uh, updated HVAC of a couple of plumbing and fire safety systems in the roof, uh, which are all now beyond useful lives. And, and if anybody's bought a, uh, air conditioning unit recently, they know what technology's changed significantly in the past ten or fifteen years, so all of these systems are much more efficient than what we're, you know, trying to keep going at this point. Uh, ADA compliance, including functional elevator. Now, we're working on the one now, but, uh, yeah, it, anyway. Uh, adequate office space for employees, flexibility and the fall plans should future needs change, we talked about that a little bit. And then the meeting room space, and we do have dozens of meetings, I mean, hundreds of times annually, um, you know, they're not really big rooms, but there are two rooms on the second, second floor of the, of the new addition that, uh, would house some of these, uh, you know, private meetings, it's, it's a real challenge of sat in the hallway there at a small meeting, and then you have to stop talking when someone walks by because you're having private conversations, it's a real challenge to have small, small group meetings, we should certainly understand that. Next. Good. Awesome. So, that's where we stand.
Okay.
We have people here from reps from our, uh, project manager and designer, if we have any other questions.
The project, the reps from the project manager, if they want to stand up and then introduce themselves.
Sure, uh, John Leavitt, project manager.
Hi, I'm Phil Bryant, Johnson-Robles Architects.
Comments from the select board, um, we'll start with Diane.
I have a couple of questions relating, and I've asked them before, but they're not relating to kind of the mechanics of our process now, um, assuming we bring, because this is on the warrant. So, the number that we would deliver to people at town meeting, and then ultimately, should that be recommended, um, go onto a ballot, is that twenty-three number?
Uh, that would be the bond amount in, in the, in the, right? And I guess I'm, it's a top line number, so we can only borrow and bond what we have, so if, if, for any reason the price is steeped, if, if the CPC is approved, that would come off if any money came in from, um, national grid or anything, for any, any traditional, that would come off, so but the max bond number, which wouldn't be on the ballot, that would be the bond authorization, would be that number that's still just running, I guess, twenty-three, three, oh, three, seven, thirty.
That's my question, that would be the max?
Yeah.
Authorization, doesn't mean?
Because I mean, we, in fact, you know, we wouldn't get anywhere new that uh, for two or three years, because it takes time to build and then.
And then one question, which I think John may end up, um, answering, because I know you want to, you had your hand raised, is this it's in terms of the timing of, of the bids, because I, I think, you know, we all know that this is more expensive than we want it to be, I mean, everything's more expensive than we want it to be. Um, you know, once we, we got this not-to-exceed number, um, you know, do we have to kind of time the bids in a certain way?
Just, just to be clear of where is, somebody come there or is it?
Yeah, John.
Yeah, yeah, much better up here.
So just to be clear about where we stand right now, so what we have from Commodore is a draft guaranteed maximum price, okay? So basically, what they have done is they've gone to the marketplace for the, for the trade bidders, which is the mass general law defined mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, painting, you know, a series of subs. And then they've gone to the market for all of the non-trades, all of the other folks, site, drywall, you know, fill in all the other things. The total of the trade bids, plus the total of the non-trade bids, plus their costs to run the job, the fee to bill, to, uh, be profit on the job, those things, those three components added together are the guaranteed maximum price. Obviously, the trade bids, they came in, they came in really high, they came in really high, and what Commodore is working to do right now is to talk to a series of those trade bidders to see what we can do to try to get those numbers lowered, okay? But we don't, you know, and they're making progress daily in little pieces, we don't want to give you a number and then give you another number, and give you five numbers. We want to give you a number close to town meeting, but the reality is, is that number could continue to improve even right up to, you know, assuming a successful town meeting, right up until a ballot time.
But it could not increase. That's a guaranteed maximum.
Correct, that becomes essentially the bid, so the pro, this process.
And Commodore will guarantee that?
Yes.
Okay.
And that doesn't mean that there won't be, potentially be change orders, but it's for what you know right now, and that's why we carry contingencies below the line for those things, like we would on any, would on any project, but the difference with the C M at risk procedure versus a designed bid build, designed bid build, you tear open the envelope and you live with what's in there. Okay, what the process of having a C M did helped figure out some of the problems that were in the basement, some things that have caused the, you know, in the end, caused the price to go up some. Some of the other parts, and, you know, if you have questions for Jim, he's happy to answer. You know, some of the other prices were just crazy high, the HVAC number alone was almost a million dollars over the budget. And that, what that is, in my opinion, is somebody who said, eh, I'll throw a number in. Okay, their estimators don't miss a number by a million dollars, you know?
I, I, excuse me and excuse me for interrupting, I think what the town needs to know is, is this a number that if they choose to vote for it, that they can be confident that's a real number?
It's the number we were writing.
Not some kind of.
It's the number we will write the contract for in the days, you know, as soon as you tell me that the funding is available. You know, they will execute, you know, the town can execute a contract for that amount.
Thank you.
The only other question was, in terms of the timing of the bids, can we wait a year to, to get a bid?
No, no, you, your, your bids by statute are good, the, the trade bids are good for, uh, at a minimum, they have to be good for thirty working days, I think we've got it stretched to get us through through town meeting, um, I think we might have said sixty in the bid documents to get us between, you know, knowing that they would come in, we would need to massage them, work them together, vet them out, and then come to a, you know, come to the town with a number.
Thank you.
Comments, other comments?
Corey, one thing that I've got, that been floating around is, is, um, I think you guys talked about this really earlier on the process, so my apologies for kind of digging deep into, into the well here, but I mean, this was brought up by, something to me is, is is, if there's any opportunity to phase the project, I think we waved it up last night. That was something that you guys discussed at the beginning, I don't really recall kind of where, you know, obviously, what's led to this point has been a lot of decisions along the way, and they, you know, A or B calls, and that gets us, and sometimes we forget kind of what happened at the beginning that led us here, so when it comes to challenges, obviously, we were going to state, instead of just do this building, what kind of, you know, challenges would that? I know we're, if it's not the charge, which is, because, do you remember that?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, sure. You know, we, we floated the idea of making it a two-phase construction. We have, make it two buildings, we have the annex, we'll take that down, build new, we have the old town hall, we'll renovate that separate from that. Two things played into that, one was, it was a very strong feeling that if you did phase one and something didn't work out, or even if it did work out, you may never get to phase two, it just might not happen. Right, right. Uh, and the second is, they will require separate systems. Separate systems mean four man, so you don't get, you don't get the competitive bid of the entire building together in one, in one package, so, um, you know, we, we talked about, we actually, we talked about it quite a bit, and, you know, we, we went around with the numbers and it just didn't, it didn't make sense at all, and we, we advised strongly not to go in that direction, keep it one project.
It's too much crossing of, pressing the streams, you know, and we talk about, uh, the, uh, infrastructure of the building. You know, this basement's not the best basement to put things, put the heating and the electrical in the new building. Like, well, if you do that in phase and you take that down, wait a minute, how are you going to keep power to this building while you do that, as an example? So it was kind of a, do it global, and then also too, from a living in the building kind of thing, um, for the folks that work here, you know? Get out once, as opposed to, you know, trying to find a solution that could keep, could keep some people here for some of the time. It just, you know, given the the nature of the existing building conditions, it just wasn't a, wasn't a good idea. It just, you know, given the the nature of the existing building conditions, it just wasn't a, wasn't a good idea.
Other comments, we have, uh, well, I I want to make sure everybody from the board has spoken. Yeah, oh Mark, is that, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
So just in in reference to the phasing, you know, anytime you phase uh phase this kind of work. It'd be additional temporary work that you'd have to put in place that you would likely have to then take out. Um due to just sequencing, so there would be a lot of inefficiencies due to um phasing. And and not to mention, you know, if you were to. Phase this and you were to do half of the roof, you would look at a brand new half of the roof on the building and then the other half would be left unfinished. Um so things like that, there's many factors that come into having a uh a phased approach, really not very efficient and attractive.
Well, so you're saying that it's much less expensive to not face. In other words, if you restore this building. And tore down the annex, for instance, I'm being hypothetical. And build a separate building, say in the apartment, I would say, you know, it's only there. Build a building size of a, you know, really a very large house to a degree. Um that would accommodate all the town hall personnel and what we have here. So that would come in much more than twenty-five point eight. I mean, I'm in HVAC build myself, so I just kind of, just kind of question that, I assume system, but systems are pretty.
Oh, no, I think it's, I I I think it's a, it's a, it's a question about um. Efficiency for both, right, the 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 cost to buy the unit for this, for the whole square footage. Probably going to cost you a little bit more to buy two individual units. You know, do one for this remaining building and then one for the building over there.
No, I would understand that, but what I'm getting at is building two separate, let's just say a phase separate, you have a town hall.
Yeah.
Business office.
Yeah.
And you have restored eighteen seventies or eighteen sixties town hall, eighteen fifty.
Yeah.
Um and so you think that will come in. Uh much more money than twenty-five point eight? I just, I just, I'm just.
No, I mean, I I I guess the the question is. What's what's in your scope of work, I guess, is what I'm asking, right?
You build a, you build a serviceable town hall and a business office.
Yeah.
You restore an old building, that's, that's, that's all.
I mean, I guess the the question, question goes to timing, what, when would you do it? When would you hold off to do, you're doing them at the same time, so that you end up with them?
The same time.
Yeah, I mean, that's. I mean, you could.
There would be, there would be, there would be added cost, you'd have, if you had two separate buildings, you'd have. Two water lines coming in, two fire protection service lines coming in, two sewer lines going out. Yeah, if 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 both buildings were two levels, you'd have two elevators. So if 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 you're building two separate buildings, it's going to be much more expensive. Than if you build one building with a, with shared utilities, shared features.
I just think at the end of the day, it would depend on your program, right, what's your square foot break down of that?
I just, you know, again, in 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 my wall, I look at some of the price of constructing large houses, buildings, we install them every day. I just, you know, I've got a question, twenty-five million dollars, that's all.
Well, I give you, I rephrase your question a little bit, is, do, is there an example of, I think your question is basically, if you do this building and then.
Yeah.
So, oh, is it, well, i- is there, is there a comparable sized building that is roughly what we're looking at, that's been bid recently? That, you know, hey, you know, is there another town has brought a building town hall right now, and there's a number that we can say, it's going to cost tax.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that we we bid the Norton Town Hall, which is a brand new build.
Yeah.
And we bid that back in. March, so it's not even a month old yet. And that's a, it's not small, it's actually a little bigger, it's twenty-four thousand three hundred eighty-one square feet. And the cost of construction was about six ninety a square foot. And when you add the soft cost, it brought up to about eight ninety a square foot.
Okay.
So here you're talking about all in cost of about ten eighty square foot. Okay, all right, we also did a couple of, and again, not comparable, except their bids, we did a couple of fire stations. And one was a steel structure and one was a wood structure, one was uh twenty-six thousand square feet. That came in at seven fifty-five construction, nine forty-five total. So a little closer to the ten eighty that we're talking about, and then the one in Falmouth, seven seventy-nine square feet for construction. And when you add in the soft cost, nine seventy-four total.
So we're talking twenty thousand square foot building, we're talking twenty million dollars, and it's basically, I just really brought that.
Yeah, you're talking, you know, a new, a new building, you could probably between right now, you know, obviously Norton was six ninety and Norfolk was seven fifty-five.
Okay.
So somewhere in the seven, seven seventy, and then you have to have twenty-five percent for your soft costs, right, contingencies.
And so they're coming in what, they asked?
Uh those are coming in between six, six eighty a square foot and seven.
And well, I I we've got the twenty-five eight here, so.
Yeah, you've got uh square footage here is twenty-three, twenty-three eighty. So that, you know, it's coming in higher, right, I mean, the construction cost here with the draft G M P. Is nine oh five a square foot, and when you add the soft cost, it puts you at ten eighty.
All right, so what the ten eighty, so what's the total say for the northern? Now, you have a cost of twenty-five eight here, I'm just curious.
No, total for, no, no, total for north is, is six ninety per construction.
There was a total bid price.
Oh, the bid price was sixteen, seven ninety-seven.
No, but plus everything, what's the total?
Uh I just, I just added the sauce, uh so sixteen, seven ninety-seven plus four point eight million in sauce, so twenty, twenty-one, five.
Okay, so they're, and the veteran did say, it's not a G M P, right?
That's designed, that that's a hard, hard bit, correct, so, correct. I mean, obviously, there isn't, there is a little bit of added complexity here, obviously, from trying to hold up a. Yeah, right.
And location.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought should be addressed, historic renovation type of um. The historic renovation aspect of this. Is complicating, makes it easier, how does that, what does that do?
I'll let Jim speak to it for a second, but I mean, I, the way I would say easier is that. If you were, you know, if you had a choice between building a twenty-four thousand square foot. Renovation, renovated new, you know, combination project or twenty-four thousand square foot, brand new in Norton. I tell you, I know which one I would do all day long, just because, just because of these. So I think there is possibly some of that, I mean, obviously, we, we solicited bids, we pre-qualified over sixty. Think over, it was like sixty or sixty-one or sixty-two individual trade bidders. You know, and most categories had three, four, five, six or seven. And we were getting one bid, two bid, three bid, so not getting four, five or six.
I think with the town would be interested in knowing the.
Yeah.
Give a little bit of your.
Where, because we, we really have made it uh. The the town decided that they wanted to keep this historic building. Um we all know that we, the cheapest thing, it's just knock down this historic town hall, it's a lot cheaper to build new. But what what is it, the actual additional cost? Because we've elected to keep the historic structure, I think it's something that people are driving in.
The upcharge to save this particular building, that's kind of a really difficult question to answer if it's a new construction.
But just in general, so we can put it in perspective.
We're not answering that question directly as far as the cost, so, but what I will tell you is spent a lot of time in this building, uh kind of digging in. I really peeled back the onion, if you will, and all the different areas exposed, all of the um structural components in here that that need to be addressed. Um there's quite a bit of it, that's, a lot of that is built into this uh price now. Um you know, where this is a renovation of a, say, newer building, you may not be dealing uh with structural impacts, the rot. Uh the type of construction from the eighteen fifties and the nineteen twenties on the addition on the back. Um so we're capturing a lot of um repairs that need to happen um. In order to bring this thing back to life.
Okay. Other comments from the board?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things, I mean, I I say this all the time, I mean, we, in the previous iterations, the town hall building committee. That was one thing we did look at, was what if we had two separate buildings? I think we had a sketch in one of the iterations where we built a new building in the back of the parking lot and kept this and restored it. And as as Mark was saying, you know, then you need two roofs and you need two sewer lines and water lines and HVAC systems and heaters and 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 everything. So I I think, I I I think all along the way that the idea was one building. And but I do think it's important for um the community that we have. We have some way of framing the idea that it does cost a little more on a square footage basis to restore. A historic building than it does if we were just building something um from scratch. And, you know, I don't know how to to do that, I think if you're looking at the Norton building, for example, and I've actually. I went to school in Norton, so I know it well. Um you know, if that's coming in at seven dollars a square foot or whatever, and we're ten, maybe that's the difference. I don't know, but I I do think we need to be able to answer that question, because I think the community's going to under, want to know the scale of this project. And that restoration is a little.
Well, I think somebody's.
Use it seven dollars per foot, which is.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So I I hold my chair up so I can try to answer that question, because I think it's an important one, and I think if you just take a look around this room, you can see the electrical wires that lay out on the floor. Um and and the reason they're laying on floor is because uh it's easy. Um and if this was a newer old building, as Jim mentioned. You'd be able to wind them inside of space like this, to tear off the inside walls, right, it'd be easier, just take the old drywall off the walls and cut all the wiring. All the piping, everything concealed, right, but we're dealing with historic fabric here and it just makes it a lot harder. When, if we do this renovation in addition, and we start building an addition over there, uh. The electricians are going to run the wires around them and then pull them through the studs, no problem, when they hang the ductwork and the pipes, they're going to hang them from the. From the fresh new construction up above. Every time we try to, something similar in here, it's complicated, you've got exposed piping. Uh every time somebody's come in and done something here, it gets harder and harder. One of the plans, what we're trying to do is eliminate all these existing pipes that you see that are exposed. We're going to take up all these wires and everything is going to be concealed. So whereas an electrician working in a new building or in a, in a less historic building, might be able to just kind of gut it up. And then run everything where it goes back in and then just put new drywall up and put a carpet down. Or we really don't have that opportunity, everything gets a little tricky. The ductwork for this space, for example, comes down through very specific chases from the attic. Uh that we design the offices upstairs around and in hope for, in very particular places in the ceiling. So that we can limit the amount of cutting and we don't need to run ductwork up above the ceiling here. There's obviously no room between plaster and brandy to do that without lowering the ceiling here. So everything that we do in this building just is a little harder in order to preserve that historic fabric both inside and out.
So is it fair to say, what you're saying, is it comparing, you, the, comparing apples to apples? From a new construction, you really can't, and some of the people say, well, why is it so so much money? Well, because the town has made the decision to retain a historic building and that is inevitably drives costs. So when we start trying to compare our potential alternatives, we should keep in mind that. Part of the cost of the historic retaining the historic town hall is implicit in that.
I I often tell folks that, that you should think about historic restoration of a building like this as a labor of love. It's uh because it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt a little more, because it's gonna take a little bit of time. And that's gonna, and it's gonna take a bit more money. Now, if you had the same square footage uh in a department store on a pad site somewhere. You'd be able to renovate that square footage, as Jim mentioned, a lot easier than you can here. Um because of this historic fabric, it's just going to take longer. I think a lot of folks will look at a building and say, well, most of it's already there and renovating is going to be cheaper than building it new. Um and that's true in a lot of cases, until you get to a building like this. Uh where where really you're spending the money to try to save it and then to try to bring back um that kind of. The glory that a space like this had, uh where all these pipes and wires and everything were kind of. Tacked on it later, we want to make all that go away so that when you walk back in here, it feels like it did a hundred years ago.
Jane?
It seems by the math, if Norton was six eighty, not including soft costs, and we're nine oh five, not including soft costs. That's a differential, two twenty-five per square foot, multiply that by our square footage. That gets us to five point two million in additional incremental pricing, which maybe is not all attributable. With the historic portion, you know, it would be like the site itself and the additional cost there, but it seems like that's a, a good. Number to have in mind, I think, as we're thinking about to the question of how much more did it cost? To do a renovation of at least the historic portion on the sites, it looks like it's around five million.
Corey?
So I'm circling back, so you're looking at a little five million and you just, I'm saying. That's why I keep bouncing back to a separate building. Um and as the senior you said, we're hiding the pipes and conserving, I mean, do we even a soft restoration building of this like this? But, you know, I can't help but thinking, but think that fault was, was that. We could put up a town hall. On the property separately, I still can't think that we could bring it in for half of a lot. Heavier, and it would serve us the town in a, in a substantial way.
It is something that we were asked to study.
No, I understand.
I can't tell you exactly. Um if, if, for example, you were going to maintain the addition that's already here.
No, I'm asking, I know, again, it's hypothetical.
Sure, so, but hypothetically, if you, if you assume that that addition is going to come down, you obviously have to pay for demolition. With that goes one of your emergency exits um and and your elevator, which isn't working great right now, and so. Some of that's going to have to go back in order to maintain the occupancy in this building, so you're going to have to build something back and you have to take that down. Elevator stairs, and then you're going to have to renovate this building, so this cost there, and then you're going to have to build a building. Hypothetical building on the, on the rear of the site, and then. I don't, I don't know offhand how much you're going to need programmatically over there, uh I assume that it's going to be less. By this amount, but we've got a fair amount of office space up in here, and if. I don't know if that stays and the town office is split, or if that office space goes over there and this just becomes a function hall. That's going to impact the size of that building, it's, it's a complicated question, so I don't know that it's something we could just answer offhand without studying it further. Um but I don't, I don't know that it would make a big, big difference, I think you may end up with more. Unused space in this building. Um if, and and you may have to build more unless you separated your offices.
We have somebody in the audience. Don't you come up here, Carolyn?
For the uh last program, that was one of the items that we looked at at length was.
Carolyn, if you're up here, people can hear you because the microphone is up here.
Um that was one of the options that we looked at at length was uh keeping the historic building as a um civic and community center. And putting all of the town administration offices in a separate building next door. And and uh we, we studied that and I'll be honest, I don't remember exactly why we determined. That that was not the right option, but we even had drawings done up of it. And I believe there, there wasn't enough acreage. And to cover parking two buildings and keep the, the building. That would be next door with all the administration in it. It, at the right height and um and size constrictions and everything there. It was, we were constrained by the amount of land that's here, but we, we actually did study that option. In detail, when we were going through all of the different places that we were trying to figure out, different options we could have.
Corey?
To your point about the five million dollars, right, is an interesting way to think about it. No, rough math, so super rough math, I I agree with a different perspective. So the question is, what does that five million dollars mean, well, I mean, that's, that's the increase in cost in order to renovate this. However, if you turn it upside down and you say, okay, what if we build a new building? We still have to do something with this, right, I think what we're learning now is that renovating this building, I think the CPC allocation was what, six point nine million or whatever? So it's going to cost us way more than five million dollars to renovate this. So i- if you kind of reverse the math out. It seems to me a lot less expensive to preserve this building as part of a larger project than if we were trying to preserve it later on, I mean. Well, how much is it going to cost to, do the new system, the elevator, preserve this? I mean, if it's a combined cost, six point nine, and we know this cost saving, what is it about, eight, nine million dollars? So we're spending twenty-some odd million dollars for a new building and then another nine, so this project has thirty million. Right, so I think that's where I come down to say, wow, like, if we're, if the goal is to fade the building and use it. It sounds like the most cost-effective way to do that is to do it along with a a usable space. And if we separate it, it just feels like we're spending a lot of money doing these tests.
Yeah, we have another comment.
Jared, we have two people on Zoom.
Okay, um. Mark. Mark, why why do we hear Mark and then?
I think he's gonna ask.
So just, just to, just to uh speak to some of the 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 pricing here, right? So, you know, in in terms of uh comparing this to pricing of a similar sized. Uh, home, again, this is public procurement of a commercial building with prevailing wage. So. So comparing this to any large scale home is is really not applicable. It's it's not even in the same league. Um, as us, unfortunately, I mean. Like it or not, that's 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 what we're we're all dealing with. Um, number, another factor here is. You know, we can all appreciate how. Difficult and go acid can be to get to, and um Commodore was able to. Get some feedback from the subcontractor market that. You know, the location that we're in factors into the difficulty of of them completing the job. You know, the the any building in Cohasset compared to a a building in Norton that has. Good access to four ninety-five and twenty-four um. Offers much more opportunity for for workers, for staff, for material deliveries. Cohasset's a hard place to work in, and I'm sure we can all appreciate from as homeowners. How difficult sometimes it can be to get good, efficient pricing here in Cohasset. And there's a reason for that. And and quite frankly, that reason is our geographical location, and we can't fix that, and regardless of. What kind of building we're building, we are still in Cohasset. So tho- those are some factors that that play into the pricing, and then, you know, when comparing it to the Norton, that was a design bid build versus. Um, a a GMP, so. This, the GMP, we we always acknowledge that there was an upfront premium cost there, but in the long term, there's the the savings. And there the the attractiveness of the GMP is the long term savings and the fact that you have a partner to build with. Versus a contractor that's gonna hit you with a change order every opportunity they get.
So, the only comment I wanted to add to your point, and and Mark brought it up, the five million is a good way to kind of talk about. Premium, but in that premium is also some location considerations, right? And there's no magic sauce to say, somebody said this. I just point to that one HVAC number, right? If it was truly, you know, the market at the time, it was enough, the bids were put out there. The market said, and we're not that interested. And that's just just by number, it's it there's no. You know, like not reading it to anybody's soul, it's just purely number of responses that we got, you know what I mean? And that's. That's what you get. It doesn't mean that the next time you do this. If you couldn't get more, it's just, you know, in a labor market that it's already hard to to get resources. We are seeing on average. You know, we prequalified sixty firms. Last year, if you would ask me, you know, we were traditionally seeing ninety to a hundred firms for every public project you prequalified for. So your pool got smaller than the people that bid are subset of that, so that's.
We got, thank you.
Question aloud here, Rob Jeffers eighteen Spring Street, if we decide to tear down these two buildings. What would be the cost to do so? If we wanted to repair, tear down, build new to renovate. It would be good to understand what the terrible costs will be.
Can you estimate what for the demolition of both properties? Is that what he's asking?
Abatement and demo is, abatement and demo projects is typically your smallest. Cost, and it happens fast, I mean.
Is Norton tearing down their building?
No, it's a new building. It's a new one, yeah. Couple million dollars, so that could be demo and restore. Yeah, I mean, it's, again, you're. I understand the question, but it's it's, that's a small cost compared to the. If you were gonna build a whole new one out back, you know, it's just. It's part of, it's part of the project. The takedown is easy, minus the, you know. Has matched the concern, right? How much, how much is best? You know, and that's, and that's in the prices we're talking about right now, but. You know, to take down the whole thing is.
You mean the whole thing, including the historic?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that that's the question that the citizen is asking. You know.
I think he's trying to say if we knocked everything down, including historic town hall, what what could we replace it for? Is that correct, Rob?
I think you just want to be a baby demo, one of the demos, right? Yeah, we don't have a.
Other um comments? Okay, um. Jane.
Um, so this may be a question for you, Chris or Michelle. So now we're at twenty-three point three for debt exclusion. So by my math, that works out to four hundred and sixty dollars a year of a tax increase. For homeowners. Based on the median home assessment of nine ninety-five, I believe that's what the chart that Jennifer Mullen gave us. Con confirms, and it, you know, it trails down over time, but it's over thirty years trailing. Is that consistent with your understanding of? Just so we can accurately message to the public what that tax calculator would look like?
And it does, it does start the way Jennifer decided, starts higher than it declines, which allows you to do other projects. Within my life. Yeah, and I get, I have to go back, that's that's about it.
Yeah.
That's what our fair assessment, and that's what our fair assessment. That's something I do for taxpayers, no.
Yeah, I think we, that's, and that's part of the thing, um. This will go to town meeting and then we'll go to a ballot. Um, to flesh out all of that, but that was the the figure. It's unclear to me whether that figure, when she gave it to us and. Um, she indicated that what happens practically speaking is when you you get the authorization, but you don't borrow the money all upfront. You borrow the money, you bond it. As you spend the money, so you may not, and I don't know if that. Four hundred is at the beginning or the midpoint on that.
Yeah, I mean, Jennifer.
Again, we could generate any turn.
I mean, that is, I think that is one of, gonna be one of the important discussions and, right, I mean, in especially when I. Believe you're going before advisory tomorrow. It's Jennifer attending.
Not her, okay, she's that.
Um, because again, that's what, that's what. Residents are gonna ask, and they're gonna ask a town meeting, sort of. And and the debt roll off is important too, because it's really just replacing money that is already on our taxes.
Yes, okay.
Could be kind of net neutral.
In my conversation with her, uh, my understanding is that they would, uh, that if the town would use short term funding. For um the begin, until the entire amount was spent, and the bond issue would actually be. The long term bond issue would be, would go out in fiscal twenty-six, so the first year of debt service would be fiscal twenty-seven. That would be your biggest um debt service number, because she uses um an even amortization number. To pay down the debt faster so that the interest charges go down. So instead of having a level payment, it it goes down over time. So your highest. Payment would be in fiscal twenty-seven. The Osgood debt. Rolls off in fiscal twenty, but the last payment for the Osgood debt rolls off in twenty-four. Some of that would be, you know, kind of. On the short term debt, so it should stay relatively level for taxpayers for the first couple of years. And then it will go up in twenty-seven and come back down. The the Osgood debt, I believe, is about half. Of what the first year debt service payment would be on a twenty-three million dollar.
So. I think that's just for town hall, just so voters have the big picture. We've also been talking with school facilities committee. They presented a fifty million dollar list of potential school repairs. Um, and we've been looking at a stabilization fund, including for fall town meeting, which if we did that. Every million that we put towards the fund, that would be an extra two sixty-six in taxes per year for the median households. So that would capture that debt roll off. I think a lot, there's, there's, there's a lot of desire to capture the debt roll off, rightly so. Um, but I do want to be transparent about all the different competing needs for that. The roads and sidewalks, we've got two studies for that. Um, that are coming in at fifteen point nine million between roads and sidewalks. So again, we're looking at stabilization fund for that. If we did. Five hundred thousand, that would be one thirty extra in taxes a year or two sixty-six for a million. That fields and rack, which I would like to hope that we don't need a debt exclusion for that. We can work CPC, but that's. At three point six million, and then. Uh, our public safety facility needs to be addressed, and that, as we see from the other. Um, figure that we got from John is tens of millions depending on. The size of the facility. We're a smaller town, so hopefully it would be on the smaller side. But I I raised this because we are looking to do a lot over the next year, which we've already talked about, we've already voted. On addressing this at Fall Town Meeting with respect to these special stabilization funds. So we do have a lot of competing needs to capture that debt roll off over the next. You know, zero to three years. And the last thing that I would just reference from a math standpoint is. You know, personally, I look at the charts that Jennifer gave us, our financial director, and. For every twenty-eight million dollars in projects we do, we're looking at increasing people's taxes for the median household by five thirty. So if we did, for example. If we had, you know, up to. Twenty-five million times three, we're looking at. For seventy-five million dollars worth of projects, which could easily be this town hall. Plus only half of the school repairs, plus getting a public safety facility going, that's at least a ten percent increase for someone who's at nine ninety-five. Of a median home in Cohasset, which I think is probably. The height of what a taxpayer could reasonably consider. We're seeing this play out right now, hang on, with the override and then. The new buildings that have gone through with people really starting to struggle. So. I did want to put out the big financial picture for people, so everyone is aware of. What we're about to hit and address this summer. Um, and what the math looks like for the median assessment in Cohasset, median being not average, but like middle of where you fall among. All the different assessments. And so that that's neat, something that plays heavily in my mind about. All of these needs that we have and how we can responsibly manage them.
Yeah, and I would uh add to that for for the town, and I'm really speaking as Jean is to the town and just Corey, uh. That we have had a lot of things that have, various reasons have. Um, deferred, haven't been spent, things do wear out, facilities, there are no building. A facility is forever, they do wear out. We're having a lot of things that are coming together. We are going to, just as we look at town hall, we realize there are things in here that can no longer be ignored, or. Elevator is already down, we don't know what, if it's. What that's gonna cost, um. But this is something the town should be aware that we are going to, as a town, have to make some very, very difficult decisions. And as you can see in this discussion, and all the hard work that's been done. It's a lot of work, and we're in the, and we are in the middle of that, and Corey, you.
You know, I just, this is after, you know, hearing hearing my colleagues list, you know, there was, uh, we didn't get an email from a resident and. You know, expressed concern about, wow, you know, this is for trying to raise taxes, this and this amount of money, oh my God, and and. I I do think that that's a clarification for the other things warranted, which is. You know, um, all the other things we're talking about, the town will, the select board cannot raise taxes, right? It it's going to go to every single thing that was listed, needs to be voted on, needs to go to advisory, capital needs to be run through the game, just like this project is that. And needs to go to family. There's no taxing freeze that this board can pass without town meeting, right? So. You you know, you could hear a wish list, but you know, remember, and and you should take comfort in the fact that there will be no tax increases. Coming to you until you all have influence on those things. And all of those things that that we just listed need to go through that same process of what exactly are we trying to do? Where exactly is every dollar going? And, you know, we can throw out numbers, but. You you know, all those numbers will pass to go through the process, and the town will have the opportunity to vote on those things. So what we're talking about. For this meeting is, and is this project, the other things are things that we'll have to talk about later. Um, but this board cannot, you know, what we're doing today has nothing to do with. Other things, that's for another time, and that means that that conversation is happening now, but I don't want you to be scared to think that. What this board is trying to do right now is increase taxes by fifty percent. No, right now, all we're doing is talking about this.
And these things also, the process that we're about to go there, and I'd like to get to there. Um. Town meeting, and then if it does increase uh an override, it has to go to the ballot. So, Jane, I say a hand up.
Yeah, but to be clear, we're not talking about thirty years from now, we need these decisions. We're talking about three months from now. We're starting to make these other decisions and stabilization funds, if we do tax increases, hit in December. They don't hit in FY twenty-seven. If they get passed, just like if this gets passed.
Diane?
I'm sorry.
And so from my my standpoint, it's very important to be transparent with the residents about all of these things that we are considering. Again, we're considering everything, including this. Nothing, we don't make the decisions. Tell me the makes the decisions, and according to your point. The voters make the decision at the ballot, but I do want them to have.
Yeah, and and I would, again, second that. Part of the thing the select board doing in a responsible manner is bringing all of these things. To the attention of the town and making sure that the process. Allows people to find out what's going on, to hear what's going on, to participate. The town hall committee is an example. Has had numerous public forums on this. The other. Um, committees are working on this, have had numerous. Uh, public forums, and then it all goes to a vote, and then it goes to another vote at um. At the ballot, when I see Diane and then Paul. Or Paul, and I don't know.
Yeah, and I I. I agree with my colleagues and everything we are saying, and and there is a lot of projects, and I think that. Our job has been and and continue and will be to to prioritize and make recommendations. This project is ready to roll. It's ready to go to the voters. And I also just want to say the 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 challenges that brought us to. Three different study groups over the past fifteen years to look at what we can do with this this particular building. And the needs, the programmatic needs, um administrative needs of town hall. They, we have consistently come up with the same thing, and the problems are not gonna go away. We still have, um, you know, failing systems, aged out systems in this building, this building's starting to fall apart. We spent nine hundred thousand dollars or something crazy to paint it the outside. Um, because, right, pre pandemic, because we wanted it to look nice as it should for. Um, both being on this beautiful common and also for the for the two fifty of that, we sadly. You know, we've been in the rafters and we've looked at it, and it hasn't, it isn't meeting programmatic needs um. For for the meetings and everything, so. None of that is gonna change at at all. At some point, we're gonna have to deal with the cost. Of doing something, and over and over again, we've kind of come to the same conclusion, and that is to have an adjacent. Have one building, one one kind of footprint, um, restore this piece and and build something that um that is a generational project. And that's not gonna change what's gonna happen next fall, just like, I mean, situat, built a middle school, high school, a public safety building, a library, an elder. Center, because they needed to do that, and they kept moving things along the trajectory. So I think every time we push this off. We're just crashing and burning um in in terms of trying to get anything across, so.
Good. Paul, and then Corey.
I just wanted to kind of piggyback on Jean was saying, if the residents didn't know that. That's a failure, they should be prepared for, I know that, that select will cannot. Increase taxes. That they should, the residents should be aware that we're gonna have staggered tax increases. Over the next two to three to four years, and they're gonna be significant, and that's something of a. When we take that on, because we have a lot of longer projects that we're attacking right now, be it the schools, the roads, sidewalks. Uh-huh, um. And so they just should be aware that over the next three to five years. Our taxes are gonna go significantly, and is it better to work on something and get it? Say one big bite of the apple or. Say one big bite of the apple or taking stall basically to that. That's the only thing is I just, I want them to know that what their faces is like, it's in every one of us.
Cory.
Um, I was just gonna say, since we don't have a vote and I know this is gonna go secretly, this, you guys are gonna need a capital advisory. Or we're gonna vote, and we've been talking about this a while, do you think we should, I mean, we, because we're gonna have to vote on it next week anyway, or not Monday, Monday morning? Monday before town meeting?
We will probably vote Monday before town meeting, we are having discussion, there's no provision on here. For a vote, so we're not gonna vote on this this evening anyway.
Still has to go to capital advisor. And one of those meetings.
Um, my 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 feeling, I believe that they are, well, I'll let them speak, but we had some preliminary meetings. Um, mid afternoon today, so I'm, but we'll let them speak for themselves, but I think they're, well, never. Any other comments? Would you like to summarize?
All I wanted to say was that. We're ready, this this project is ready. Now, there's been some other iterations that have come to the town floor but not been to this point. We have the pleasure of working with uh, you know, the volunteers on my committee. Great diverse group of professionals. We have one of the best project managers around, very professional and been the guiding light for us, our architects. Have listened to us and given us a building that we wanted. Um, we are fortunate enough to have people from the last reiteration around. Know what they wanted for, not on a program, but for design. And then we we picked up. Pomodoro, who's our construction manager, risk for our building, uh, it's got a fabulous reputation, we just got a really good team. Everything is ready, we are ready to go.
And I think the town should know they are ready to go because a board of selectmen is telling them to come back with figures and. We've made their life very, very difficult, only in the service of the town, but thank you. You have been true um veterans or or whatever and a very difficult thing with. Different messages and different things, so when Chairman Layer says that this project is ready to be voted on. It in fact is ready to be voted on. That being said, is there anybody else who would like to speak to this issue? Okay, I think we'll move along. Now, you guys are welcome to hang around.
I mean. Do we think we should have some sort of motion here that way, we we have a public meeting? The reasons for it, I mean, I'm just a little worried that if we just, we only have a vote before town meeting.
We can't, we we don't, it's, there's no provision on the. Um, yeah, agenda to have a vote. Okay. Capital budget review and final vote on the project.
Well, I know, we're on the clear now.
Let's just share, there are two items that capital have not voted on at the last meeting.
Correct.
Uh, project five, which is a draft of smart panels at the middle of high school. And our project base, that's our base, so it's voted for them unanimously. Uh, so, um, even though advisor won't get it, I mean, I'm not expecting any objections to it, if you want to clear that.
Move to recommend those two items as presented on capital budget.
Have a motion made and seconded to um uh vote affirmative for those two items. Is there any discussion? Nobody here to discuss? It's okay Cory, you take your word for it. Um, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, session motion carries unanimously. Um, Article twelve, one time costs, review and vote.
Mr. Chairman, there are two other items that uh that should have been included initially that fell off. And one is an authorization for a thirty five thousand dollar outreach sale of cemetery lot one. Um, it's a, it's an account that's been sitting there for a very long time on tax and we're gonna be needing some of that money. Uh, to do some maintenance and upkeep, some enhanced. Uh, maybe it's enough to live over the summer and also to keep in the process of bringing the management storage records, there's been a big step forward. But they need to buy a fireproof storage facility and continue to get some of those records updated, so thirty five thousand, move them in that direction.
Do we have that?
That was just added, uh, there was added that that I in the in the international summary, then would they all come in motion? So that's why I said this. Should be on that, should be repaired.
Clarifying question, which is the thirty five thousand dollars that's in the cemetery account. The the expenses that you just mentioned are for the cemetery.
It's not a debt issue.
No, it's not a debt issue, it's not.
Okay, do we have a motion for um?
Motion to recommend um. The additions for one time process of the thirty five thousand dollars, cemetery lot and the ten thousand dollars.
Motion has been made in second, is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, session motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, we're gonna review speakers from the board for various articles. Uh, does anybody have, I did not bring my my latest warrant.
Here's the list.
All right, first of all, does anybody um wish to speak on any particular article? And what do we want to establish is our what method of deciding whether we will speak?
And Paul, maybe you and I can discuss, I would like to speak and maybe with Paul on the Veterans Baller Act, that's something that we're working on.
Right, well. Paul is the only um. We had a pre pre meeting. And Paul, the only veteran on the board, so he certainly will will speak, but if Jean, you need something to add something?
She made it out.
Yeah, I know she did. So the two of you, whichever you wish to do is. Is everybody fine with that, with Paul and Jean, huh?
Absolutely, my my only, I I just wanted to kind of summarize what we. What typically has been standard, which is the chair speaks on the operating budget and but you're also on the. Um, zoning, which I think needs to get spoken about.
Unfortunately, yes, I will.
Um, and because everything else, I believe is pretty unanimously supported, we, you know, I know the moderator doesn't like. Select board members to speak on very much, so I say less, less is more, although obviously with town hall, I think we. I mean.
There will be, I've talked to the moderator, first of all, let's, let's talk about. Town hall, town hall will be making a presentation. Um, there is probably, to keep things moving along, they're probably not going to. But our moderator would prefer not to have a lot of discussions. Um, by select board members on that, I mean, if we choose. To vote, we can say we voted in favor, we voted not to take a position. Um, but unless somebody really feels strongly about it. Town hall at at uh town meeting.
I I think, to your point, town hall building committee will have a presentation and then we'll have another question to be asked, and the public is gonna have a lot of questions. So I kind of feel like we should have.
Yep.
I think, yeah, and he also practically said, he said, any, anybody who has a position strongly. And talks a lot about it generally has their position moves.
That's why we're usually quiet, which sometimes people that come to town meeting and knew. Wonder why we're not speaking, but.
Yeah, it's probably.
There's only one other part. Jack, uh, there's at the very beginning of the meeting, we've, this is the second year of the House, you're consolidating the recognition. So um you or any of the members want to read the recognition of, there's a list of, there'll be a list of. Uh, town's hirees.
I think Diane should. She's been in here, I remember, never mind, I won't say anything, I think Diane should should um. Speak for that.
I would love to do that, I can speak real fast.
And I think if there's some similar thing in there, we might, this is Cory's last hurrah, if there's something that will get.
I don't need to say it.
It's this time.
I'll stand up and I will make an impassioned speech for us to transfer the money for one four three TV, which we are legally required.
Mind, I take I take that suggestion. Right, yes, you will, you'll get the five minutes and whatever, okay, um.
So Jack, just to wrap.
Yeah.
This, so Diane, Article one, you're gonna do the operating budget. No one's gonna say anything on Article five, not as the official select board, we're gonna let town hall building committee. Obviously, people wanna speak their minds and. And then we, just to carry through, Article sixteen, Veterans Baller Act, maybe we don't need to say anything. Don't think it's gonna be controversial, people may have questions.
I think that you should, I think that we do want to speak to that because of the nature, very briefly. Yeah, I think Paul, Paul should be. You're the veteran, you speak.
I can, I can help you, I I wrote it and figured it out, but I will answer questions that you may get.
Right, understand, us speaking is is not for us. Having you speak is not for you or the select board, it's to, it's to the veterans. To have a veteran speak to this, the veterans thing, you have no choice, Paul. Okay, good.
So in Articles twenty through twenty five.
Yeah.
Consistent with um the approach with Town Hall Building Committee, the zoning bylaw committee is gonna present, and I assume that would be Tom Callahan. Twenty through twenty five and that yield being reserved, people have questions.
Right, and and um we we will have um.
And Judge Cutler.
Judge Cutler will be there to answer questions, um I will be there only. In case it's needed, but I really, it's really Tom Callahan's.
We should have Diane presentable to the sign regulation.
That's me.
Okay, do we have anything else that we need to um? Okay.
Okay, I just just one update for you too, it was just, this was just a mistake, we left something out, yeah, you don't need to read most. The revolving fund, that even once we approved the new vaccination clinic fund in December, we just forgot to put it in a list. So it's in all this, it's already, it already exists, but it's just an annual renewal, so. Um, I'm I'm not seeking any votes on that because it was, it it's already, it's not like asking.
Okay, moving on, school project funding review, discussion and vote.
So following up on that, I made a conversation with Lance Stiles to make shares past week and the super that's solving today. Uh, and their their requests are now boiled down to for the moment. Uh, one would be to fund that school projector request to fill out small gap, twenty five thousand seven hundred twenty two dollars. Um, the second would be uh would be Oscar project. Uh, we're gonna seek, we have about sixty thousand dollars left, but I'm okay, our money. Uh, or I plan, uh, so that they would seek that as well, um, which would be on a hundred thousand dollars. And then they may come back. I I'm gonna give super that's all the next couple days, if we need to tweak one of the motions to recash. And they might need less for their um. Thank you for the full kindergarten, maybe, uh, so the the money amount won't change.
Would we have to, you would have to do a town manager motion to?
Yeah, I tweaked the, I I tweaked the motion in advance, but I let you all know and you have to vote on it before it goes in.
So do you need a vote right now for us?
They they'd ask for votes on the projectors of the hospital if you would be willing.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just, I I just wanna. I I wanna clear this up in my head.
Yeah.
So. The twenty five thousand seven hundred and twenty two dollars for the projector.
Project five.
This is project five, this is an additional sum of money.
Just because I got reduced to the capital that fitted into their one point four million, with the understanding that might be some additional money to find them.
So the twenty five thousand dollars that that is because this got reduced is is being sought from our. And then the other, the other sixty thousand is also our fine, which means none of this is going to town meeting. Just us determining this, okay, great, thank you. Yes, so, second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, so, uh, we presented to Jennifer and I, uh, some requests and and you voted on the school. Um, curriculum, and we've applied for that. Uh, we also applied for the waterman and the the actual, actual money for water, but they they, we didn't ask for votes, we didn't have it as necessary, but. Nothing cash required and stuff like, we're permanently built on every present days, so we had the askers just freedom to go to. Formally authorize us to apply for twenty five thousand between one and.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Okay, South Shore Regional Recycling Cooperative, you and both on. Um, I am a.
So there's a, the the, there's an IMA, we, the, the, the pounding member of the of the social recycling cooperative. The town benefits from it uh by uh unified bidding, pricing and recycle and recyclable opportunities. Plus, I saw how those waste collection days, we're part of the team that does that. Um, the the the, the IMA has really function unchanged, but they've asked, uh, this, but some of these have joined every year. Um, so they've asked for ratification, I think we circulated just the the base, you know, uh, Calum. And our tank gas is given uh, uh, I I I a green light on this, I wish, when the final document comes in, because I haven't gotten that yet. I'll I'll leave after this vote for Jackie and then sign it.
Okay. All right.
So do you need a motion for us?
Yes, I need you to ratify or authorize our name, authorize that.
So move.
Um, motion made and and seconded, all those in favor? Opposed, extension's motion carries unanimously. Okay. Cohasset Historic District Committee. Somebody has applied, we have somebody here for that or?
I would move to appoint Linda Giacomo to serve on the. Historic District Commission for the Common. But I just get a clarification on the motion, because in terms of what the term is, is to fill an unexplained term through a certain date.
Okay, uh, motion made in second, is there any further discussion?
Just waiting for application, okay, yeah, yeah.
For one year.
For one year, any further discussion, all those in favor?
I have.
Opposed. Obsession motion carries unanimously. Turnative energy orderly, uh, is there anybody here to speak for attorney?
There is.
Oh.
Why, right?
Why? We have a presentation with animation and Justin, I'm going to pretend I'm clicking on it and that'll be your cue. How about that? All right, perfect. Alright, perfect. My name is Tanya Bowdell, I live at eighty eight South Main Three, and I am the Chair of the Alternative Energy Committee. And thank you for having us.
Yes.
So under our charter, we are asked to provide quarterly updates to the select board. And mainly this is to let you know what we're doing, how our progress is, and ask permission to move forward with certain initiatives. Um, so we act at your behest, but we come to you with recommendations and then ask for your approval to move forward. So that's what we're here to do on Q one twenty twenty three, we like to start the beginning of the year with a request of. Or telling you where, what we've done, and then where we wanted to, and we have some very good news. Following that the discussion of all the expenditures coming up. Because the Alternative Energy Committee is one of the few committees that actually brings money into the town. And um, we have a little update on, on how we've done that, so we'll talk about our committee members, the importance of keeping a full. Team, the value created for the town, twenty twenty three initiatives and next steps. And um, the key takeaway is to date, we have brought into the town benefits of at least one point six million dollars. At least, and I will walk through what that comes from. I say at least because there are energy efficiency investments that are in that one point six million. But the savings on the electricity bill to the town is not included. So there has been, um, for example, the high school, we'll talk about this at the high school, they installed a regulator under the Green Communities Act. And that made sure that the air conditioning, the heating system weren't fighting at the same time, which believe it or not is happening. Um, and so that efficiency uh, brings in even more value to the town. And, and the, in terms of savings, and we think we could by the end of this year have a total of two million, and that's conservative. We have at least four hundred thousand dollars of value that we could bring to the town. Um, and on a present value basis, uh, with some of the um. Potential opportunities, it, it could be much higher, but to do this, and, and I wish I could take credit for this, I can't. Uh, we have an incredible committee, they're very passionate, enthusiastic, we need a full committee of seven people because our forum requirements for. We will be down to five, we're now down to six, we'll be down to five, we can't wait for a year like we did last time. We just, I would hope by June, we would have our full, full committee. So that we can have our phone and keep moving forward, and our committee is incredible and passionate. Uh, we also need to continue having the support of the town and the staff, uh, like Michelle Leary, who's incredible, Chris Senior is incredible. And we have a um, Sustainability Director, Virginia Leclair, who is now helping us and is incredible. And we just need that along with some dedicated um. Time from Town Council, because there are contracts involved with what we're trying to do. And um, sometimes the contracts get stuck in a queue, and it just slows us down.
Tony, you said that, my apologies, or you said you saved two million dollars, where did that money go?
No, no, so, at least one point six million, we think we could get to two million by the end of this year.
Where do the savings go, how do we capture that money?
Uh, right, so, and so, so far, the savings have been going basically to the general fund, in, in the form of lower costs for grants. Um, there's no, uh, we've looked at alternative ways that we could set up a fund, uh, sort of a revolving type of fund. I think to date, it hasn't been justified, uh, but going forward, this might be something to consider. And we've done some research on what that would look like, but that, of course, is up to you on how you wanna structure this. Um, some of the savings, like the energy efficiency savings, you know, you'd have to create about four world to know what that is. But there definitely are some opportunities where revolving funds might make sense. Um, this is our team, and as we say, uh, we need two new members. Hopefully by June, Patricia Gooding, who has been with us for four years. She's uh, resigned, and Michael Schmidt, Schmidt, who's been with us for four years, he's with the whole light company, um, he's gonna roll off, and let somebody else. Step in. Uh, but like I said, under our charter, it's not about a forum of majority, it's, we have to have four people to have a board. Uh, here's a breakout of our one point six million in savings, um, a big chunk of that comes from green communities. The solar energy array at the local, so the green communities with only eight thousand people, we have uh, brought in about. Eight hundred and thirty five thousand, or eight hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The solar energy array at the landfill is three hundred and fifty seven thousand. Um, just the old landfill just majorly did us a service this past winter. In six months, we saved as much as we had been saving on average per year. So this past winter prices were so high, as you know, so we got that as a credit, it's been incredible. The EV charging stations, uh, we received grants for a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to install the EV charging stations that we have. The microgrid studies was around a hundred fifty thousand, consulting services at least fifty thousand, and then there are other grants. Uh, to the tune of about thirty five thousand, these are what we can tell. So one point six million dollars that our Alternative Energy Committee has brought in, for a total of the one point. Uh, six million, and we have in the queue. Uh, close to half a million, if not more, we say four hundred thousand here, plus, ready to go. If we can make the projects work, there's a lot of, as you know, a lot of research that goes into this. We have an update on the electric school buses, we've got it down to one issue. Uh, and that's because we put pencil to paper and came to some realization, so we'll give you that update, we'll talk about that.
Right, here's Peter, I got time, Corey, your question, much of that is actually in. Capital expenses, so paid for, we, we, uh, new HVAC equipment, we didn't lighten. So all that green community money paid for it, we had to pay for it. Yeah, so, so most of that, and the same thing with the charging stations, we were for. Yeah, that's what, so, so, the, the savings about the energy side, we allocate that out, so the schools get a chunk of it, the town gets a chunk of it. Street lighting gets a chunk of it, that's how we stating is off.
I was just thinking, like, there's a way to pack it, and then we can deploy it to new trucks, you know what I mean, we'll be, then we can stack it, you know, we're using one truck to get it to that garage.
But most of it is actually. Yeah, so, so, yeah, it's, not, not that I'm minimizing the savings, it's not a lot of it.
If, if you get us a free charging station, is that considered a savings, because otherwise we buy it?
Yeah, we, we, well, the charging stations will put in help the. And we're actually, we, we gotta be closing shortly, charging plant, by the way, we use them, that's coming up. It charged people who charged their cars. That's next, it's on the list, uh, but yeah, so we wouldn't have to be. We started with time vehicles, but now they're scattering around sites.
Well, like an example, the electric vehicles that the town uses, right, if we hadn't gotten the grant money for those vehicles, the town would have had to purchase.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out when you say there's savings, that's because you get donated or whatever from a grant, things that.
So our efforts have put us in the top twenty greenest for the state.
Yay.
Yes, that was twenty twenty one. Um, and, yeah, we have the full ranking of the different towns, and what's interesting is Cambridge is number one. Uh, has ninety points, Cohasset has thirty five points, so that tells you. You know, there's still a lot more we can do, Hingham, I will tell you, has lead progress, because if you, um. There's a list that you can look in your presentation about how they rank. Uh, and we don't look at it as, okay, we wanna get to number one, but we look at it as, here's a guide, here's a roadmap of things that we can do. Things that other towns are getting money to do, things that we can move forward with, yes, it could move us up the ladder. But the key thing is, it's a roadmap for us of where the money is, and, and I'll be honest, there is even more money coming into those types of investments. Uh, it is like one of those old fashioned game show money machines, where you really just need to go after that. Uh, so, next.
So you're bringing a, a variety of state and federal funds into the town.
Correct, so for example, the Infrastructure Act at the federal level. Has money that's coming through the state, it's now starting to hit the state, who's going to distribute it. There's uh, the Inflation Reduction Act allows the town, if the town wants to go directly and make the investments in solar. The uh, what used to be tax credits can be a direct payment. So there's new ways of doing business for nonprofits or municipal governments such as ourselves. Uh, and the state continues to wanna push, and, and has stated departonization goals of net zero by twenty fifty. And they are using money and incentives for the towns to make those investments. So that's the money that's flowing in, and um, there's a social justice aspect to this money. That for obvious reasons, we would not qualify for, they wanna make sure the money's not just going to the well. Um. Positioned towns, who, who are wealthy and might have talent to be able to get the money versus other towns that can't. So there's a social justice, these, for example, the EPA school bus money I've said before. This first round, which was one point five billion dollars, we had no chance of getting, there was just no way, so we didn't bother to go after that. Uh, so we're in a great position, there are some initiatives for twenty twenty three that could continue to save the town money. Uh, the solar energy array savings have been very powerful, and we have guaranteed a potential. Opportunity with Homer Capital, who runs our existing solar energy rate, for guaranteed savings. It would basically a contract to buy credits from a solar energy system. Uh, happens to be a local solar energy system that they're all ready to do. Uh, but that, those types of credits are available, you basically pay a dollar and you get a dollar twenty five back in credits. Um, that is ready to go, we just need to have that credit contract reviewed, and we need. National Grid to finish their study because they put a hold on all solar energy array investments in the South Shore. While they figure out what's going, their transformer. Um. So the library is another one, so any municipal buildings that are replacing their roof. We look at that, and we go, ha, 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 this is ready for solar, and the library is an example of that. The library uh, is a much smaller rooftop, but it could yield the same savings. Combine the library and the former capital credit contract, could save the town twenty five to thirty five thousand dollars a year. So you can. Get a quarter of a million dollars at least in that present value savings. Um. We wanna work with schools to design a bus depot microgrid that has solar batteries chargers. Those would be significantly subsidized because of the Inflation Reduction Act, and create savings for the town as well as residency. Uh, and we are monitoring the National Grid cluster study that delays new solar for now. But as soon as that opens up, we wanna be first in the queue to, you know, to move forward. Uh, the next would be electric vehicle charging stations, uh, as you know, this is coming, so I'm not gonna elaborate on this. Uh, but we are continuing to be an advisor for what type of charging, the chargers should charge. Uh, the next is the stretch code, so there are, there's a new stretch code that is already active. As a green community who adopted the stretch code a couple of years back, it automatically applies to us. Uh, but there's also an optional stretch code to go net zero, we don't know enough to make a recommendation or not make a recommendation. So we're just at least making sure the town is aware of that option, and also aware that we are gonna run their new stretch code. For the state.
Have you had a chance, um, we, we've had to deal with stretch code. What the new stretch code is likely to mean for all the. Um, upcoming construction projects. You know, like for instance, Town Hall, as we discussed at length earlier, and some of the other projects, like the new schools, is, there are gonna be. Um, new schools or renovations, uh, police and fire clearly needed. Do you have an idea what the new stretch code is likely to cost, or drive costs on those?
Um, no, and I can't even sit in here today.
I know, but that would be something.
Are, but this is exactly what we would like with permission to research. To educate ourselves and you.
Right.
Uh, I don't know if we can get to any incremental costs, because. I just don't know. Yes.
Jane and.
I know, um, the Public Safety Facility Committee in Hang On studied. The. Cost of the public safety facility without the net zero stretch code, and then with the stretch code, so that just. But that was last year, so I don't know if it's been even incremental improvement since, but. I do believe they got presentations and members on that that may.
I think there's information out there we can find, yeah, it's just, we didn't wanna start going down an area that you may or may not want us to focus on.
Yeah, they found it expensive, so they don't like.
The next, the optional, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're facing substantial construction costs in the town, and we're. I think we're probably facing some very significant financial pressures. So, it seems like that would be a, a natural place for that particular study to live with. Alternative energy, and of course, you brought it up.
Yes, of course we did, um, in addition to the.
Well, I was just, I mean, so. I think the question, there's two questions, right, one, the obvious decision about whether we want to adopt that stretch code, and that's. That's an optional thing, and it's going to have uh, costs for people in this community to meet, and you know, but that's a, it's a green community now, but it's also frankly not. I, I don't, I'm not super comfortable with AEC being in charge of that, we have a planning board, you know, they're in charge of voting stuff. Um, they've talked about some of this stuff before, um, so like, for me, you know, I would, I think I'm more comfortable having an elected planning board. Lead the political policy discussion about where we go, and AEC, to me, this is more comfortable in, I don't wanna say. I don't really wanna see, I don't, not really people with advocacy role, but informative role, like what is this, is that kind of. I don't, you know, I don't think your committee should be at, at the head of this, and be like, you know, put up in front, I think it really should be the planning board, this is a policy political decision. And you guys serve as, as kind of the experts to answer questions, does that kinda make sense?
No, and in fact, that's our charter, which is we have.
This is just to understand, because the stretch code, a good portion of it has to do with energy efficiency.
Well, we have to.
And it would be, I, I know, but it'd be good to have the, our. Appointed expert on um, energy efficiency to give us some idea about it. Uh, but we don't have to deal with that this evening, it's already late.
Um. Um, zoning bylaws, we've been asked by the zoning bylaw committee to review the zoning bylaws with respect to renewable energy. Um, and the appendix has sort of a little history on that, and it would take two forms, one would be to look at, uh. Right now, a judge who reviewed them says it, it's pretty much meaningless. It, it was set up to be very focused on one location that we already knew was going forward, build landfill. Uh, so, if we don't put more specificity around the zoning with respect to renewables. It could be interpreted as being just another book, and, and so I think it's.
I'm on that committee, it's an advisory committee, and I'm not. There's been some um, confusion about whether in fact they. Were to go forward with that mandate, just so you know, and I, and we're not going in, in, in details, but I think there's a little misinformation.
Well, that's why we're coming to you, because this is exactly one of those uh, topics that we need your. Direction on how we would move forward with this, we have been asked to do it, we have not.
By, by, by whom?
Tom Callahan.
He doesn't have authority to ask. I talked to him.
But that's why she's here.
I know.
And I told him that we don't have the authority to accept, for the same exact reason. Uh, and that.
Subsequent to that discussion. Um, the, is, the zoning bylaw committee is, is not charged to do that, and I don't think we wanna spend a lot of time.
Then we can most certainly, if, if the direction from you is take that off the list for twenty twenty.
Yeah, let's.
We will take that off the list for twenty.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh. Climate Action Plan carbon inventory. Um. This is something that could position us for more grant money. Uh, the Mass C E C is looking at expanding green communities to being green leaders. And those towns that are doing very proactive measures have access to more money. And this is something to think about doing, um, and there may be some money to hire a consultant who can help us do this, we did do that in two thousand seventeen. Um, Hingham just completed or is completing their climate action plan, so we would have a template if we wanted to look at that. And it took them about a year plus, so it's a process, not a document.
Right.
And then, um, the last would be grants, working with our sustainability committee coordinator to optimize the grants. Uh, and as I said, having town council time just could be very helpful, because we're getting stuck in a queue. And, and I know there's a lot of competing demands, and I know the committees may or may not have access directly to town council. And and I know there's a lot of competing demands and I know the committee's mayor may not have access directly to town council. But um, there have been some long delays because there have been other things.
I would sug- suggest that um, that would, so that would be a good use of a town council and and um. Why don't, why don't you? Get us some, flesh it out a little bit so we know what's going on. I mean, that's what we have town council for to assist our committees. So I I think that would probably make some sense if the board agrees in gene.
Is there anything you're waiting for right now in the immediate future? For town council to review?
So we have two things that we are trying to complete. One is the batteries, the grant for the batteries, Harborview, twenty thousand dollars. And that right now is in the process of uh procurement so that we can get bids and understand whether or not. The cost is higher than the grant, and if it is, how are we going to fund it? So the contract edits. Have been put on pause, so that's one aspect of of our initiatives that we're trying to complete before June. But that's now well in hand. Um, so Virginia Leclair, who's our sustainability coordinator, is taking the lead on that and moving forward, and I think closely with Chris and with Michelle. Um, the other is the credit contract for credits from Palmer Capital. Um, that was initially given to us a year ago. February. Again, it hasn't mattered, to be honest, because national grid has been the roadblock, but we're now.
You now need to, Chris, is there a reason?
Well, it's because there's nothing to implement, right? So I don't want to run the clock on council. Just no access. The minute we have that, when China says we'll go, then we can do it, we'll be done.
But with Virginia, when she's done, it sounds like then we counseled it quickly.
And that'll be done too, so so that's.
Everybody else, everybody, everybody else set with that and.
And the electric school bus. Is is, we were down to three final issues. Uh, and Ray has been incredible, Susan has been incredible. And and now has been incredible, and it's really collaborative, and we figured out there were some physical issues. We were down to four all-school half-days where the electric bus might not. Be able to run through the day without having to charge in the all-school half-day. So, you know, there's enough backup that we've got the backup, it wouldn't necessarily matter, but it would change. Protocol and so anyway, we've now figured out and now has offered us a super duper mama jama level three charger at no additional cost.
So they're our contractor.
They're the contractor we're negotiating with.
Will tell us it wouldn't happen. Never mind.
I'm sorry, you said it wouldn't.
Never, never mind, never mind, it's late.
Uh, I don't know, okay, so they um are offering it to us and and just so you know. Hingham recently procured two level three chargers, fully installed at a cost of one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, so these are very expensive. They are doing it as part of the demonstration project. Um, I think they, given these negotiations, now understand what a New England Yankee is. Stayed firm with our lease um agreement and they have really. Uh, collaborated. I can't say enough about the process. The one issue outstanding is where are we going to park the bus? And that's been an issue since the beginning, so hopefully we could, we have a solution.
We we are, we are aware of that issue. Um, so you got your legal. Was there anything else?
I think the feedback um we've given us on what to focus on is.
Are there suggestions you have for new members that you want to provide to Tracy? I don't know if there's people in the queue that are. Lined up for June, um, given your new forms.
Yes, thank you. We have asked every member of the committee to come up with some names. We've had people who have been attending. Um, on their own, just out of interest, and so ideally, those would be people that we'd want to look at. I do think we don't have to make this official, but. This committee, it's such an esoteric part of the economy that having sort of like an associate member. And we say this to everybody who's shown an interest, you can be an associate member even though there's no official associate members. Just to keep people up to date. So we're trying to make sure that the line of succession is built.
Yes, there's associate members are the way in which people learn. Um, if they learn, if they have a talent, but they're also innocent apprenticeship, it's very, very important.
It's very important. So the question is, do we have to have an official associate member role?
This is a, um, is this a bylaw committee?
No, we actually changed it from a tripe appointment committee to a regular committee, so we have the authority to.
No, but I mean, is it an advisory to the select boards? So we can do whatever we want whenever we want. We can, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Um, if you feel it's helpful to have an official apprentice, um. Fine to do it. If you have. There's nothing to stop you from from having them show up. But if you feel that's helpful, let us know and we get it on the agenda.
Just on that, I I think that one of the questions I had was, you know. Would it be easier if the committee were reconstructed to have five members, that it forms three? And maybe there's two associate members that aren't part of the forum. I mean, you can make somebody an associate number, but if you still need them for the forum. Based on the, you know, the. The total number of members.
So I don't.
Something to consider.
Yeah, I don't know. I have to look into how the associate members work, whether they are part of the forum or not. Part of the forum or only part of the forum if somebody's not there.
You could make the part of the forum, so it's missing, so maybe that's what CBA is usually for in finance.
Now, that's why I asked whether it's a bylaw committee or if it's just appointed by the select board, there's a difference. I mean, like, for instance. The town hall committee, we can change that. Mandate or the charge anytime we want. Whereas the other committees, we can't, and that's a question for Chris.
Your choice, it's a select one committee, we constitute.
So if you come up with a different way to do it, you just bring it to us and we. Discuss it, vote on it, we can change it immediately. So that might be something that.
Good, we'll put that on our next agenda and have it as a discussion for the committee. To understand.
If you'd like me to show up to explain all that, I'd be glad to do that.
Oh, that would be great. That'd be great. And we're also looking to ask the Hingham chair of the cap of the climate action planning committee. Come speak with us, and just as you probably know, we tend to have speakers come for the first half hour. To share what's going on out there and then we go on with our movement. So it's very informative. We think it's very fun and exciting.
And you have refreshments.
We don't, we're still virtual.
I don't know if I can make it.
Happily, we'll we'll have refreshments for you. So that's where we are.
Any other comments from the board?
All right, great work.
Chris?
Two quick things. First, uh, thank you. We're excited, uh, we we we're working at the Department of Revenue on a new program they're doing to bring in any turn in the summer for July and August. They're free, they've been paid a hundred percent by mistake. They're right in the finance department, which is even more exciting, so we're going to help someone become a hopefully. A government financial building that will, so they're they're in college now, they're getting trained. And they're putting them in places in the state, and we happen to have someone in the area who. We just started it very today, so we're very excited. She'll be here for July and August, Jennifer and Linda, very. So we'll introduce her at some point. Uh, and just again, my name's Monday, uh, May first, seven P M, uh, so from the forty second of the year. Um, the warrant is is out, everyone has to calm, so. Don't hold it in water, I'm sorry, the 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 print is a little, it's like these print this year. The printer, that's all they can get for the size of the warrant, because there's so many, so many agents. So any articles, um, so just don't expose it to water, uh, but please bring it with you, because all those zoning materials in this. We didn't reprint them in the motion, so uh, the motion should be up, I hope. We'll have to take a look at our friend.
Think we're gonna have to have that. Well, let me think about that. We may want to have copies of the zoning available.
Well, and we'll have extra warrants.
Okay, um. Selecting comments, Barry, we'll start with Corey.
Uh, yeah, two things, I mean, just um, one, um, I'd like to just for the next agenda, um, just give the board an update on. Uh, what's happening at the M D A advisor board with some other stuff that's happening. Um, electrification and double tracking, which I'd love to put it in the board, um, especially if I'm not going to continue on that. Uh, second thing is just just thoughts, I mean, I think tonight was a. I think I learned a lot. I mean, I've been paying attention to the town building committee for a long time, and I still learn a lot today, and. One thing that stood out is the idea of like restoring this building for what it was a hundred years ago, and I'm. The more I think about it, you know, this is an opportunity to to, it's a paradigm shift of how this building is. And it could be set up for next hundred years. I mean, we're we're ready to go, and I just, that to me. Yeah, it is worth, is worth showing, sharing people about. It's an opportunity to invest. It's an opportunity to do things in an efficient way, um, and I just, uh, I. As the more I learn about the process and what, how they came, their conclusion was more impressive with people there, so thank you for telling me on that. And um, that's all I got, thank you.
Paul?
No, tonight, I'm bringing.
I think it is going to be an interesting town meeting as we move forward. Uh, I I do, you know, continue to feel strongly about. Border education on the big picture. I know I'm beating a dead horse here, but I do think that. The more we can do, which is a part of. Our job, um, to provide full information to our voters, um, the more we do a service to our citizens. And and I I don't, I. I'm glad you're beating the dead horse, because I I totally agree with that. I think we do have to, um. You know, give as much information as possible, and to that end, I know that town hall building committee is having, I think, a presentation on Thursday night. So I would encourage people to attend. I know it's also candidate night, which is just really unfortunate, um, but alas. Um, is what it is. The only other thing I had for today is just, um. Right around now and usually before town meeting, but um, we've been so busy over the last month or so, um, we haven't gotten there. Is really advertising to fill committee positions, um. And and I I would just encourage everybody, and Tanya brought it up, um, you know, there's a lot of people rolling off. Um, and this is where the sausage gets made, you know, we we populated the sidewalk committee. Kind of midstream, which was great, but there's a a lot of people that are going to just roll off and point and see if they take place in June, so. Um, spread the word and tell your friends, because it's very rewarding.
We should harass the people that didn't get picked at the sidewalk.
Yeah, exactly. And 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 there were, I mean, I think we mentioned it, there were a lot of really great.
And a lot of expressed interest there.
People that were interested in getting involved, so let's let's call them up, get them on a committee.
Thank you, Diane. Uh, I'd just like to. Kind of refer to what Jean said about people being. Informed. We are, there's no way around it. We looked at it, this select board has worked very hard. Looked at all the things, and there are problems that aren't going to go away. They're just not going to go away, they're just going to get worse, they're just going to get more expensive. And it isn't, it isn't necessarily a lot of fun to have to deal with that, but as. Responsible stewards of this wonderful town, I think the select board, each and every one of them has worked very hard on that. And if you watch the number of public meetings and public hearings on these things over the past few months. There's been a lot of information, there's been a lot of work that's going, we have a new public affairs guy. Right, we've redone the um. Town website, also people can find out, and we've been hearing these hearings. And we've had some pretty contentious discussions about that, but that's a community engaged in its future. And I think that we are making progress, and it is not going to be easy. It's going to cost some money. I am, I'm a fiscal. Conservative, but sometimes you have to spend it and we have to spend it fairly. We have to spend it across the board. We cannot have parts of town neglected, you know. Beachwood is a. Uh, a great example, we'll be working on Beachwood, we're working on uh. Fields, we're working on sidewalks, we're doing all of this in the town hall of long-range financial projections. These are all major issues, and this is a watershed. Uh, time in the history of Cohasset, and. I think we're all working together to keep Cohasset the wonderful town. And on that note. Motion adjourned, made in second, it all is in favor. Both.